Good evening. We'll call the special meeting in Northwood Beach Pool Park and Recreation District to order at 6:04 on Friday, August 17. Present are Commissioner Shane Hoffmeyer, Commissioner Pat Harden, Commissioner Wendy Singleton, Commissioner Sean Merrill. The agenda tonight is the -- there's two items, the potential schedule for opening the pool and the potential budgets for opening the pool. As it's a special meeting, there's no agenda changes. Tonight, it is your turn, sir, to take notes for the minutes. So Commissioner Hoffmeyer will be taking minutes. With that done, we'll start with the first thing, which is the -- I have over here, thanks, you're good, you're good. Special, the -- you're awesome. The potential schedule for opening the pool. Kind of have to do the budget first, I would think.
Troy, I didn't understand what two different things were.
Yes, I think they're pretty much lumped together. So we're going to start off with what we have in front of us. We have in front of us three of the cash flow projections for opening the pool, and I will let Commissioner Singleton explain if she would please.
Okay. So, yes, there are three different scenarios here, and so I kind of took off the labeling from last time because it didn't really make sense anymore with the way that we tried to do this exercise. So we're not going to refer to those anymore unless we need to for what happened to this thing. Okay. So, point being, and so one of them was, what would it look like if we tried to open in September? So I'll just go through what's here. One is, what if we tried to open in November? What if we -- and both of those have supplemental donations/contributions to them that make us as close to, like relatively close to hold. And so, in other words, something that would balance our books or come close to it. And then the third one that says, "Open in 2019," and I just sent this out today, I realized that there was kind of a scenario missing, which is, so what does it mean to us if those donations don't happen and we, you know, and we're not able to open, based on the conversation last time? So I'm not trying to lead the conversation, I'm just trying to -- and so then that one was, "Open in 2019 with no assistance," and I tried to kind of play that one out a little bit. And then the fourth page is, so based on the schedule, and I really -- apologies that my printer doesn't work and I couldn't see how like crazy tiny this is, because it actually is giving me a headache already. But, seriously, but this one is taking the schedule that we agreed to. So it was that option one from, you know, the basic, option one, and then adding four hours of open swim per our discussion. And I know Julie had sent me, is it adding two 90-minute periods or two two-hour periods? I just went for two hours and we can adjust that, but I had to make an assumption. And so that's what, and so that's actually calculating the lane hour costs. And then there's a whole list of assumptions, and I realize it probably reads a lot like a drug commercial, where it's like this thing and that thing. Do you want me to use a new word? And so that's what that last one is. And makes, and so what that's used to do is to assume pricing and assume revenue projections and based on whatever information I had. So how accurate are they? They're as accurate as the information that I had and that I made and the assumptions that I made, which is what we're, I think, here to look at, you know, what the result of that is and if there are things we want to change about it. So what I did, if I go back to, so that was just kind of the overview, if I go to the opening September one, conveniently enough easy to recognize because it's got a weird line through it, so that one, what I did on the revenue side, so a little bit different from last time, was since we defined some very few activities that would be taking place in the short term, I just called each one of those things out so that we could, instead of lumping revenue together and going, "It looks like we might take in this much money," it was, "Let's call each one of them out separately so that we can understand what the impact of each one of those things are and/or if there's a problem with those assumptions, that we understand where to change it and it's not just a lump figure." Right? So, in other words, I have property taxes at the top, which, you know, these all, of course, let me back up for a second, these all assume that we pass the levy. Of course they do. Right? That's our working assumption and that's something we know is going to happen. But in this case, so we wouldn't start getting money from property taxes until January. And the other thing I did was adjusted down that amount just in case, because we never know how much we're going to get until we get it. And so I put $20,000 because I felt like maybe that was reasonable, but I think we have to assume less. And if we get more, then, you know, windfall, right? And then I did, so open swim, lap swim, wellness volleyball, Navy Swim, private rental, swim lessons, high school swim team, private swim club. And then, you know, I just kind of went through and added those things separately. And then, I think most, everything else is the same except for, so then if you go down, for the folks who have looked at this before, so then you go through, I left the advertising revenue and the sale of real estate on there. I know that we said, "Take the numbers out for that," but those are activities that I think we are probably going to need to consider at some point, so I don't want to see those go away. And then when you go down to the expenses, everything's pretty much the same as before, and these are kind of all just lumps of the P and L to make it a little bit shorter. And then I added the, from the document that Pat and Julie and others worked on, I added the employee training and background checks, the new pump, just so that we don't lose sight of it, because I think we have, we keep saying that it's a must-do, and so let's just make, you know, in this documentation, let's keep it visible. And then I just put, you know, just called it facility updates. So that is kind of a, I guess, a primer there. And what I did for both, so basically I kind of played around with the numbers, and what I mean by that is not, I tried to be as specific as I could on things like the revenue, on what it's based on. So for example, open swim, I just based it on 60 people at $5 a person, six times a week times four weeks, on average. Is that a price that we all talked about? Not necessarily, I just tried to make something up. And that's the same with all of these projections. What was I going to say? Sorry, there was something. Oh, and then, so what I did was, I figured out what donations or contributions, we talked about the fact that the Rotary, for example, is considering a monthly donation and looking for, well, would be looking for us to find others to match or contribute as well. And so in this case, what I tried to do was go, what's kind of a consistent, what would help us get through consistently? And interestingly enough, in the September versus November, those numbers are really not that different. It actually came out to, it really came out to 110,000 in either case.
Where's that line?
What's that? It's the bottom, the bottom of the revenue, it says donations/contributions.
Before the total revenue.
Yeah. Yeah, near the end of that. And so I was just trying to figure out, and so what I did was kind of put it in where, I'll call it where we needed it, but in the case of, if we open in September, just to help us get through some of the kind of crutch things, and then the cash on hand, so part of what I'm looking at is at the very, at the top, where it says cash on hand at the beginning of the month. And that's where, if you looked at it online, you could see red when it goes under, so there's a cash balance over a minimum of $30,000. And again, that's something that I, you could say arbitrarily set, but it felt like a good number. And so in the September model, we do go under that, but not, not a whole bunch. And then in the November model, basically it would be, we would go under that considerably more in the February timeframe. And, sorry.
December timeframe?
In the, sorry, January, February. I mean, is when it gets the lowest, according to, on the November.
Right, right.
Yeah. Sorry, if I misread that.
And then December and the open in 2019 with no assistance.
Well, yeah, in the, the open in 2019 with no assistance and without a property sale and without advertising revenue, you know, we still have a, it's always a problem, you know, I mean, that we, that it is ours to resolve, but that's, so how that shifted was, what I did was took the, looked at the insurance payment plans. And so basically, it would mean that about half of our insurance or a little over half of our insurance would be due in November, and then the rest would be due in six months. So it's kind of a, you know, and there's a cost associated with doing that, but it shipped the insolvency to January without any additional revenue. And again, that also assumes $10,000 for the election, just based on, I mean, it could be--
What we've been working with so far.
Well, and realizing that there are a lot of things on the ballot and, you know, that probably, it should be a good number, if not a high number. I mean, you know, I mean, I know we're all crossing our fingers, but anyway.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns?
Still in discussion period or motion or where are we at there?
If you want to make a motion, you may.
I don't want to jump the gun though and gum nothing up. I mean, so if we can still talk about it?
I think we can talk about this, it was on the agenda this way, so yes, we definitely can.
I mean, the way I'm looking at it, you know, first of all, I think, I think all of Commissioner Singleton's budget assumptions are pretty close to as correct as we can get, and that that's kind of been pulled out of every, a lot of things that we've already established. And it's probably our best guess in the dark there. You know, the, I think I would probably favor the cash flow projection that shows us opening in September, and as Commissioner Singleton said, you know, this is assuming the levy passes. And I think assuming can be dangerous when the public improperly assumes something opposite of that. So for me to support that cash flow, I think that without the levy's passage, I think that it would have to have a, there would have to be language attached that we're closing on December 31st or something of the sorts, because I wouldn't be comfortable going below that, that $30,000, really. I mean, I think that $30,000 is enough to, I mean, and here I go back a year, you know, it was, it was said, and some people thought that was jumping ship, but it was said if the levy did not pass, that you would see draconian cuts here, probably worser than any others assumed. And I really think that it would not be very wise to go below that $30,000, because I think that is probably the number of dollars it would take for us to appropriately absolve the district if the levy were to not pass. So that's where I'm at on all of that.
I would, I would love to see Wesco with the September. And as part of that, I definitely, I noticed that you've got the lap swim, wellness, and volleyball in there, and I definitely would like that to remain part of the budget, because those are the people that, in my experience, I mean, when I sent out an email for help at the Pig Fest, those were largely the people that showed up. So I just want to keep that in as it is. So, and I thank you for all your hours of labor.
Commissioner Holly?
I want to commend Commissioner Singleton on all the work that you put into this. It's amazing. And, you know, you kind of cuckooed a little yourself, and it's like, you shouldn't have done that because it's really good, probably better than any of the rest of us could have come up with in twice the time. And finally, my thought of this is, I would love to be able to open the pool, but as it shows, we have to go and get donations. And what are we, and maybe that's what we should focus on, is how, what are we going to do to get the donations? Because we're not anywhere near the amount of money that we need to open.
Right.
I would agree with that.
So I've got a couple of words before I bring us back around to that. First off, after what everybody's said, I know you and I've had many discussions about this, and one where you laughed at me over the phone and said some nice things about asking you to do this. Thank you so much for doing it. And I, you know, it's priceless to have this, one of the things, and it's a small thing to look at when I look at the numbers, I really, I think like any of us, I really like the September plan. I think opening sooner is best for our community as a whole and best for the pool. I think there's people out there that want to help. I would say, I think the, and it's a small minor point, but I think the projections for the private swim club are going to be a little high. I don't think we're going to be able to see them stand up that quickly or at that level, unfortunately, to rebound. But that's, in the big scheme of things, it's not a big number to adjust. We'll adjust that obviously as we move forward.
Well, the reason it's there is because the, I mean, I can't assume that this board would choose to lose money.
No.
That's a, that would have to be a board decision.
Right.
I mean, that, and so it's done at the, at cost recovery.
Right.
And I just want to make it clear.
No, the reason I say that is I don't know, while I know the high school swim team will be here, I don't know if we can count on that private swim club to stand up quite as quickly. So, in all fairness to them, you know, probably should be said that, like everybody else, nobody's been in the pool. So for them to come around and gain those numbers, I don't see it happening.
Absolutely.
I think you bring a valid point. The biggest thing is the Rotary, we've already mentioned, our donations, pardon me, the Rotary has mentioned how much they're going to give. You know, we've talked about Island Thrift, we've talked about, you know, doing more with the Navy to maybe hopefully getting more money from them, donuts. And so, well, I think that we can count on more donations than just the Rotary. I think that's going to be an ongoing issue and something that, right now, we're going to have to tackle on top of passing the levy, which we will pass. So that's a very valid concern when we look at $20,000, we're only a quarter of the way to that. So.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you find out what that drop dead date is for girls swimming? Sorry, I'm not trying to--
No, no, it's not, and that's a good question. And I've talked to Dr. Gibbon, and I'm going to try to remember the gentleman's name, and I apologize.
Who is it?
Jared Flurry.
That's the guy. And while he didn't say there's a drop dead date for so much, it needs to happen, and they need to know, probably this week. And by this week, I mean this coming week. Fall sports start on Monday?
Yes.
Thank you. Fall sports start on Monday, and by Monday, they're going to have to let Wesco know whether or not they're actually going to have a season. They've kind of, they've strung Wesco along as much as they could, and if they don't say something by Monday, they impact other students at other schools, and that's not, you know, so Monday, they kind of need to know, unfortunately. So that is the answer to your question.
Because obviously that has, and I'm being clinical about this.
Yes.
It's not intended that we don't care about having our events, our community events here. It's not about that. But it also has impacts to our revenue projections, which impact our ability to, you know, it basically impacts the whole picture here.
Yes, it does.
And so that would obviously change things as well for, you know, it's negative for anyone who would be missing out on that board, and it's negative for this facility for a different reason.
Yes, I don't want to spend money that we don't have. And I, what I would like to know is, you know, you say we're 25% there, where are the other 75%, you know, how are we going to get that? And what we have to do, you know, do we have to grovel or?
I don't think, no, I think we have to put, we have to actually go out there and talk with some folks. One of the folks I mentioned we'd have to go to, to Island Thrift, and put in, ask them for a donation, and there's a process for that. It doesn't take much. I'd be willing to do that, actually, for the board if we decide to do this.
I don't think we can, we can't request the money for the district.
No, we can't.
It would have to be done on our behalf or on the community's behalf or what have you. That's why we didn't apply for, well, I talked to Alex about it last year, and he said, no, the district would not, so it would need to come through a nonprofit of some sort, whether it's a 501(c)(3) or a Washington nonprofit.
Copy. So we can do that, so I'm thinking that we might have an avenue to approach Island Thrift.
Rotary said that this Washington state nonprofit can write the grant, and it can go through Rotary, and it can be the match.
So we're halfway there.
Well, it's a, ten grand, but if you go, foundation, that'd be good. So you're really, that first one?
First two months.
You're closer than you think, I think.
Yes.
A little bit.
So, excuse my stomach, yes. So that puts us a little bit closer. Yes, Jane?
Probably ready for a motion if anybody else is. I move that we approve the cash flow projection for the Northwood Beach Pool Park and Recreation District opening September 1st with the part-time schedule, one that we'd already agreed to, but with the amended language to show that without the passage of the levy, that we would close December 31st.
So you have a motion to go with the Northwood Beach Pool Park and Recreation District opening September 1st with a schedule previously approved, and with the additional language of closing the pool on December 1st?
December 31st.
December 31st if we do not pass the levy. Do I have a second?
I can't second that, and I'll tell you why. Two reasons. One, September 1st, we will not be ready to go. That's not possible. So it's written non-specifically for a reason, because part is when, we're assuming all the costs for September, but we have to make sure, you know, we have to make sure that there are things that are ready to go for us to do that. The other, the other one is, I just did quick, I just did a little, little, little bit of math here, and in reality, let's, let's say if the levy doesn't pass, if we have those, let's call them benefactors in our community, if the levy doesn't pass, I don't imagine that we would be taking checks from them for the month of November. I don't know, I mean, if they chose to give them to us, that is fine, but I don't think, I think part of that is, what is that MOE with them? Because if they chose not to, then we actually would not be able to remain open through December 31st, just based on, based on these numbers. And so I think it's important that we set a realistic expectation, and I would do it without those donations, because at that point, if we, if we did, and, you know, if for whatever reason we did not pass the levy, then that's a whole separate conversation that, you know, that we would have to be having. And therefore, I don't know, you know, perhaps people would say, sure, just keep people in the pool as long as possible, knowing that more than likely it's closing, not to be fatalistic, but probably for good.
Right.
And I was looking at the calendar, you know, as well, and it looked like maybe Thursday, September 6th or 7th it was, maybe something like that would be more doable.
I know. Just to get the full temperature up, it may take a tad bit longer.
It might take that longer, yeah.
Yes, exactly. We'll see.
I think it's more realistic for us to, to say that we could open it when certain conditions are met. I mean, that's, I think that would probably be the wiser thing to do.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? No second, the motion dies in lack of a second. Further motions?
I would move that we open the pool the 6th or 7th. Well, I need to put a date. The 6th of September, if we have received notice of contributions amounting to at least $15,000 a month. And then not putting an end date. If we do put an end date, make it, and not putting an end date.
Okay. So we have a motion to open the pool on September 6th with confirmation of donations equaling $15,000 a month with no end date. Do I have a second?
I mean, I'll second for discussion.
Second for discussion. Discussion.
I would need an end date to support that, just because I don't want the public making the wrong assumptions that we can do this without the levy, because it's clear we can't. So that's, that's the only thing I have there. Further discussion?
Yeah, I'm still, I'm going to, I'll just say it right now, I'm going to vote no on anything that has a date on it, because I feel like it's the wrong thing to do. I think the other thing is, I think we need to have a director in place, and I think that, you know, I think for me, that's the, I mean, and obviously we have to, you know, staff, public, Jack, all of that, but I think we need to have a director in place. So for me, that's what I'll vote yes on.
Commissioner Holly?
Yeah, I agree. We, there's certain preconditions that we need to have, and I don't see us getting there by the first week in September, unfortunately. But it's like, we do need to have a director, we need to have a certain amount of donations promised, because it's like, this is all contingent on these donations being given, and if we don't have enough guaranteed and enough people willing to go forward and beat the bushes and get more, it's kind of like, that's going to, you know, we're going to end up with, oh, so bad, we ran out of money on November 1st.
Is that, is that amendment ready? I mean, I'm, I think I'm pretty amendable to something along those lines myself. I mean, I think maybe it is better for a director to be able to decide that.
I think, because we were talking about this current one, and it's, I don't think that's really amendable. I think we could go with a different, differently worded.
So I, may, may I? Thank you. So I have a couple of thoughts as we're in discussion. One, I don't like a hard start date. I agree, we should leave that open. And one of the things I think we need to be clear about is, as we open, it doesn't have to be an all for nothing, you know, open the door. Just because we say we can't open until mid-September, some programs, which we've talked about before, we talked about revenue streams, and being very clinical, as you said, to use a word that was used, being very clinical, I see two things, and I'm going to throw this out there. One, revenue from the high school girls swim team is much appreciated and useful in September, and getting them in water sooner is always a good thing. It's a good story for us. It shows the public that we're actually working towards what everybody in the community wants, which is getting our pool open. And it lets them have as much of a swim season as they can, since it's supposed to start next Monday. We obviously know we can't do that. Nobody wants to turn a revenue stream away, and that's basically what we'd be doing. If we wait until mid-September to tell the girls' high school swim team we're going to open, we've told them no, quite frankly. We've told them no. So keep that in your mind, and that's money we're throwing away, and more importantly, that's part of our community we're throwing away. And the other thing is, you know, like I said, I know Commissioner Harden has some concerns about a phased opening. I respect that. But I don't think it's not opening the pool for everybody, it's opening the pool as soon as we can for everybody. We do need to get the director on board. I think we are going to get there on Thursday at our regular scheduled meeting, or get closer to there on Thursday, I should say, which is going to help open the pool, and I think we can meet the requirements and the concerns that we all have as far as donations go. So, that's all. I have any further discussion on the motion on the floor?
Yeah, so if, if we take out, so again, I'm just living on the vis a paper, if we take out the high school swim team and we take out, let's just say, and let's just say the first three months, and that's assuming that all those other revenue things are the same, which I, which may not be fair, it's, I had to make assumptions. But if we take even the first two months out, that's $16,000. And so that puts us in a position of a little-- so that puts us in a position of a little, it's, it's precarious when you get to, um, March and April. You know, I mean, it's precarious anyway, right? It's precarious because that's money that is not coming in. Um, and so that's just, it's just a, you know, if, if we had those donations, that's great, but, but we might actually then have to ask for more, but recognizing that our value proposition has gone down. And I, and I know, I'm, I, part of it is, is kind of the, you know, what do you do about it given where we are right now? I don't, I don't know the answer. I, I try to provide as many answers as I can, but that's one that I just don't know what to say because, um, that's, it's like, I, I think that's where we're gonna have to figure out, one, how to, you know, can we make, can we make some of this work? I think if we assume even two months, if not, if we take out three months, sorry if I'm just-
Take out three months of what?
Of the private swim club revenues. That's over 20 grand. That's, you know, meaning like that plus the high school swim team.
At $64 a lane hour, there's no way that we can forfeit?
And, and part of it is that, I, I understand that, but that's, I mean, that's, I cannot, I cannot choose to discount things on my own. This board has to make that decision, right? I, I understand that and I would appreciate just, please, not being interrupted. I, I, I understand. Um, but part of that is, okay, so then in that case, then that's $38,000. And that puts us then in a totally different position, right? So, again, I, I wish that I had a genius answer that said, here's what we do about that. I think we kind of need to think about it a little bit.
Further discussion?
I, my question is, if the swim team can't afford the 3,840, is there, is there a possibility of like renting two lanes so that you could keep going?
$64 a lane hour, that's outrageous. At $25 a lane hour, we were barely able to make it. And just being honest with you, I can't, I can't charge these, or our swimmers that will cover that cost. It's impossible because I will need more than 60. I will need somewhere around 30 a lane hour.
So how many lane hours do we give the high school swim team?
Um, it's, uh, let's see, 7.5 times 3 lanes, right? Because it's an hour and a half a day, five, five days a week. Um, so that's seven and a half times 3 lanes. So that's 21, 22 and a half.
And Lance did raises, he said he needed a career for boys and girls. That's not a problem.
22 hours per week, right?
22 and a half per week, yeah. So it does, it does include things like meats and whatever. I mean, you know, so there's obviously a little more finessed, um, you know, stuff that can, that can go in there, but-
So-
There's not much.
Why not, um, give the private swim club as they restand things back up the same cost that we give the high school swim team?
Uh, per lane hour, aren't, I mean, per lane hour, aren't we ending up in the similar place?
Hmm, I don't, I'd have to do the math.
I mean, it's, it's not that different. You're right. I mean, that's, if you add the, I mean, if you just do a basic and add the three months together, that's, let's see, nine, that's 11, four, it's like 11, 5.
I mean, I just, I, I, I support the swim team as much as anybody. I just don't want to be kneecap in the high school either.
I agree.
But, but I, I mean, you know, if, if we're asking our individual opinions, sure, I think that would be fine because I think the other thing we have to recognize is that if, if we warm up the water and if the pool, you know, if we warm up the water and if the high school swim team is in the pool, anything that goes unused is wasted space. So that's, so, so it's either, it's either earned something or it's $64 per lane hour of a loss, right? This is, I mean, this is real, these are real costs or at least according to this, and there might be some differences, but these are real costs. And so, again, from a cost recovery perspective, you can say, well, sure, we can, you know, we, we're asking $64 per lane hour, or we can say, let's look at parity or, or something similar to, to fill the pool, right? And, and that's revenue.
I mean, the only other thought I really have on it is I know the foundation, you know, some of the subcommittees we've had, the board, the public, nobody really wants to see us reopen the pool just to turn around and close the pool. But I think, I think we all have to have the conversation and I think it's part of the reason we're here tonight. I think, um, I think there's a lot of thought out there that thinks that if we don't open for September, October, November, maybe we don't gain the relevance we need to pass the levy. And maybe that by being open for those couple of months, maybe we generate a little bit of press and remind people we're still here. Maybe a couple hundred people that come through the door for open swim, maybe they remembered about. It, it, it's a tough one and I think if anybody in the public would, would look over all these numbers and all the work that's went into it and listen to these conversations, even, even with inordinate amounts of donations from the community that, that, that never could be sustained on a long-term basis, it's still tough to get open. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. Um, but for those reasons, I would, I would favor probably voting to open it even though that obviously without the levy's passage, we, we wouldn't be able to stay open for very long.
Further discussion? We do have a motion on the floor. No further discussion. All in favor of opening the pool, uh, September the 6th with 15,000 dedicated in donations a month as projected on the cash flow statement, aye?
With the, uh, that's with the part-time schedule also, right?
That's with the part-time schedule, yes.
And was that with the director also, right?
I don't believe those words were in there.
I didn't.
No. Let's not add to the motion. Yes. All in favor? All against? Aye. Motion is defeated unanimously.
Maybe we need to work on the wording that, that we all want.
I think you're allowed to make a motion too.
Thank you.
I do remember reading that.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, that we open the pool with the following conditions. We hired a director, we need commitments of donations to meet, to match at least the first four months of, as specified on the draft cash flow projection, schedule number one, or, I'm sorry, it's on schedule number one, um, but the sheet that shows an opening in September. And, um, if the levy fails, the pool will close. Or, yeah, that, I'm gonna say that because it's true. If the levy fails, the pool will close.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second. Discussion.
I think for, for me, that pretty well caps everything.
I agree.
Can you, would you read that? Okay, so-
So the motion is to, yes, the motion is to open the pool in September with the conditions of-
Not in September, I don't think I even said September.
No, you didn't. You said, open the pool when we hire a director, we have commitments on donations to meet the first four months, and if the levy fails, the pool will close.
I would, I, I would like to make, well, let's cut that one, then we'll talk about the girls' swim team. I feel bad if they don't get a season. I still think we need to be responsible and we need to, we need to be sure we have the money to keep open.
Okay. We can discuss that now. We're in discussion, but-
Oh, I, I, you know, I would like for them to have a season and maybe we can work it in such a way that, you know, they can start without a director, although we're gonna hire one fairly quickly, right? Okay. But, um, maybe they can start swimming before we completely open the pool. I don't know. But-
I mean, just, I mean, it, it seems that it's completely off one of our intentions that that be the case. I mean, obviously there could be a setback, et cetera. I mean, who knows, right?
Yeah. I don't know. Maybe the, um, if the, you know, we get another sizable donation, it's like that would be enough to indicate to us they can have, they can start their season. But I don't want that to be, I actually don't want that to be part, it's not part of this. I think we need to talk about it a little bit, but I hate for the girls to lose their season.
I also hate for the girls to lose their season, but I would like the fact that we need at least to know that we're going to have a little bit more commitment than what we have now-
Yes.
-to start the heater up and, because I don't want to start the pool heater up and then three months later say, oh, now we can start, you know, open swim, we can start family swim time. You know, so I, I want, I want to be a little bit further on commitment before we even say yes to the high school, although I know that needs to be done very quickly.
Yes.
Would you be okay if I ask Amy or John Tardaloff a question?
Please, go ahead.
If either one of you could answer. Um, so, so say it takes until September 15th or something to get the water heated, et cetera, if we are able to open. Is there any chance of the girls' swim team using the pool at Sierra or Anna Cordes or something for a few weeks?
What was the first place you mentioned?
Sierra, I, I think at some point long ago, I think they swam at Sierra or Admiral's Cove or something.
We are scheduled to practice next week starting Tuesday at Admiral's Cove. I don't know how long Admiral's Cove is open. I don't know, I can't speak for the athletic director at what point he'd be like, this is too precarious and we can't really commit, so we just, I know they want to have a swim season. Um, previously we were looking at any, any options. Not everybody tells us there's swim that'll look in, but, um, oh, yeah, the West Western.
Doggy paddle.
It sounds like Anna Cordes, that can happen for us. I mean, maybe they worked into that. I'm sure they're pretty busy with their own schedule.
So- So we might have a couple of weeks of leeway or something.
Well, just being there, they have three, I think four without us, right? Four, four teams without us. And so, uh, just being there every day for most of the week, Monday to Friday, maybe Saturday, just understanding their schedule and speaking to the aquatics director. Uh, the time slot that they, that they have is very narrow, if at all, for anyone else. They can't even accommodate six additional swimmers, uh, with what I bring over there. They have a hard time managing that simply because of the commitments to their swim team, the commitments to Anna Cordes, the team at Anna Cordes, the team in Sea Dwell Woldy, and then you have an Auburn.
And Auburn's pool is under-
And it's not gonna open until, oh, man.
So I guess, uh, if it was a matter of, okay, we have Admiral's Cove until they close, we might have a few days of dry land, but then we know we're gonna have, have water, that might make a difference. But I think they would have to have some assurance that there'll be a little bit of a hiccup with water, but it's gonna be there. But I, that's just my best guessing, just through conversations that we've had.
I mean, so could we, could we amend that to have a hard start date even though those conditions obviously have to be met?
We can, we can amend any motion.
Well, okay, so Mr. Chair, sorry, I didn't, I didn't really get this around. Um, the, the reason why that would be dangerous to do is because then that's another condition and if all those conditions aren't met specifically, so let's say we have an open date of September 6th and we don't meet those conditions, then we literally have no backup plan, right? Because we, because we set all of those conditions and we didn't meet it. Um, and so I, I, I get it, but I think part of it, so what I wanted to bring up is, okay, so the one, the one player I haven't heard in all of this, and it's, it's ours to take the action and to define the action and I think now is the time to do it because I think if we, if we vote in favor of something, then we're all like, yeah, I feel better about that and then we all get in our cars and we have a plan. Um, and so before that is, is someone, so, so the city is the, is one of the bigger players in this potentially, right?
Yes, they are.
And so we need to define the, hey, who's, who's gonna go ask for some money, um, to see if it's there. Okay. All right. I just, I want that to be clear so that everybody understands this is happening, here's who's doing it.
And I'll say it for the record, it was the chair.
Pointing at his, at himself. Um, but, but just trying to make sure that we have a really defined plan. Um, I know that I have told Julie that I will work, Julie that I will work with her in any way that I can for the Island Thrift, um, because I wanted to do it last year and that's, and I was told no, meaning we couldn't, we couldn't apply for it for ourselves. Um, and so, I mean, I'm ready to go on that because, um, I believe that, you know, there's, you know, there's good opportunity. I think the other thing that we might do is, is perhaps each one of us take something, um, because there are other service groups in our community and, um, while, you know, it doesn't feel great to always have our hands out, on the other hand, I think it's, why not just go ask? Um, so, you know, I think if we, if we look at that, I think that maybe we could define the other groups that we can go to and have an owner for each one of those and if, if anybody feels like they need information or support, if there's something I can help you do and understand so that you can speak to, you know, feel comfortable, I'm, I'm willing to do that. I just think it requires action on each of our parts.
Yes, agreed.
I'll go talk to NWR.
Thank you. Tell me who to talk to. I'll talk to them.
Lions.
There we go. Lions, Seroptimist. Ooh, not Seropti, love you, Pat, not Seroptimist. They meet really early in the morning.
Thank you.
Two now.
Okay. Well, so there we go. So the later on, that's, I was like, Pat at 7:30 in the morning.
Not a pleasant person.
Really?
Sorry to put that right.
I'll, I'll take Seroptimist.
You'll take Seroptimist. You're gonna take the Lions Club?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
I guess that leaves me with the Northwood Beach Sunrise Rotary.
Or Kuanis Lions, or no, Kuanis Elks.
Yeah, a lot of people.
Um, I'm actually into Elks. I'll talk to the Elks.
Awesome.
Keep forgetting that.
Gold, gold star member.
Exactly. I go to ask for money or to top the vote for the levy.
Can they donate directly to the district? But it's not that simple. Well, rather, that's not the, the statement is that, um, that you would, uh, talk to your accountant about, uh, the tax deductibility of your donation. So in other words, we're not telling you it is or it isn't. Cause I am just gonna, just wait.
All right, further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion to open the pool with the conditions of hiring a director, commitments on donations to meet the first four months, and if the levy fails, the pool will close, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. The other thing we had on here was this, was the, uh, scheduled to open the pool due to the motion on the first agenda item. There's no relevance for the schedule to opening the pool. Um, I will say this, we have a meeting next Thursday night, regular scheduled meeting at 18:30, pardon me, 6:30. Um, the more we can get done between now and then, the sooner we can put a schedule together. I know that's not very realistic for some, but it may be realistic for others. So, um, please keep that in mind as you go forward. Is there any discussion on, uh, the potential schedule for opening the pool? Is there any discussion on, uh, the potential schedule for opening the pool, other than the budget that we've gone over and the motion that was passed?
Uh, we, we already voted on one, so I, I wasn't sure, yeah, sorry.
No?
And just a reminder, I, I won't be here next Thursday. So, if, if there's anything that anyone needs or wants, um, you know, please let me know.
I did send an email. If you could read it, please. Thank you.
So, I won't be here either, so I hope everybody else will be.
Do I have commitments from you two?
Yes.
We will have a quorum, so we will have a regular scheduled meeting. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion for this evening, or do we, maybe a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
No, that's it?
Oh, that's it.
Yes, ma'am, that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? A second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for coming.